Thank you, and we are back from executive session. So a call to order now, open session of the North Andover Select Board for Monday, June 2nd, time is 7:02. If everyone could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we get started tonight, I just want to address a couple of things. It's been a really, really challenging week here in North Andover, particularly for our public safety family. Last week, we lost firefighter Jeff DeShane's unexpectedly and far, far too early. Jeff had nearly a quarter of a century in firefighting and EMS. Half of that here in North Andover. And whether you knew Jeff well or not, you knew Jeff because he was always there, ever present at every event, every training, the schools, it goes on and on. The impact that he had on our community is going to be really, really, really hard, if not impossible, to fill. So, you know, on behalf of the board, you know, our thoughts are with him and his family and with the entire North Andover Fire Department for what is really an unimaginable loss on their part. So let's we just take a brief moment of silence in honor of Jeff. Thank you. And additionally, if that wasn't enough, yesterday, we also lost our community resource, Officer Scarlett passed away after only 23 months. Additionally, she was having a very big impact in North Andover with our students, with our elderly. She'd visit Leahy Hospital. It really is a remarkable program that we have. So it's been a really, really hard week, as I mentioned, for our entire public safety family. So especially want to think of the Wilson family, who wasn't just, you know, she wasn't just assigned Officer Wilson, like that was part of her, part of their family. So we know they're feeling it as well. So with that, just want to address those while we've got everyone in the room and not the end of a long agenda, because I think it's important for our community. So thank you all for that. Okay, now we'll move on to new business. We have a series of public hearings. It is all for one project, but we're going to take this as three separate public hearings because they are three separate neighborhoods along Route 114. So with that, I will take a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Are we going to do public comment?
Oh, no. Why not? That would be good. Thank you for reminding me that. Sorry, skip right ahead. Public comment. Per Select Board policy, public comment is not a discussion, discussion, debate, or dialogue between citizens and the Select Board. It is a citizen's opportunity to express his or her opinion on issues of town business. The Board may respond to public comment by taking into consideration when deliberating on an agenda item or referring the item to the administration for appropriate action or response. Public comment shall be for a period of up to 15 minutes, with speakers being allowed three minutes to present their material. Thank you, Madam Town Manager. Is anyone here public comment? You afraid I was going to skip you, Joe? You afraid I was going to skip you?
I was. Good evening. Thank you. Joe Hicks, 49 Bradstreet Road. I'm on the School Committee Vice Chair, but I'm here in my own accord as a private citizen today. Several years ago, I stood before here with my friend Jen Fresen, and we watched the Select Board pass a proclamation about Pride Month. I just wanted to remind the Select Board what was in that proclamation, as you then tonight take a vote on whether or not to have pride banners around the common. So I'm not going to read it word for word. I'll give the highlights of them because it's just easier. So whereas the Select Board of North Andover recognizes and proclaims each June as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer Pride Month throughout North Andover, and North Andover observes Pride Month with applied flag-raising ceremonies to honor the history of the queer liberation movement and support the civil rights of all citizens, whereas all human beings are born free and equal in dignity and rights, and LGBTQ+ individuals have immeasurable impacts to the cultural, civic, and economic success of our country, and whereas the town of North Andover always embraces the values of respect, achievement, inclusion, service, and empathy, and whereas the town of North Andover is dedicated to fostering acceptance of all of its residents and preventing discrimination and mistreatment based on sexual orientation or gender identity, and whereas the town of North Andover is committed to providing, to supporting visibility, dignity, and equality for LGBTQ+ people in our diverse community. And that's the part I would like to highlight the most. The banners that would go up around the common are an important sign of visibility for the queer community here in North Andover to ensure that everyone feels seen, heard, welcomed, and accepted. So I ask that the Select Board tonight vote in favor of that motion. This proclamation was passed, I want to say four or five years ago unanimously, unanimously by most of the people here tonight, save Mr. Kress and Mr. Roche. But I just ask you to do the same tonight. Thank you.
Any additional public comment? Okay.
Mr. Chair, there was public comment that was sent to your email today. We did attach those to the agenda for anyone who would like to view those.
Excellent. Yes, we got quite a few. Okay, now we'll move on to new business. As I mentioned, we're going to have three separate public hearings regarding some pole relocations along Route 114. So if I will take a motion.
Okay, we are in public hearing on the first item, which are along Peters Street.
So is someone presenting from Nashville grid? Correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Brian Sathler. I'm here petitioning for work request 299-73433. As you've brought up before, it's an extensive job being done here in North Andover concerning multiple streets.
Can you just be a little closer to the mic?
Yeah, sure.
Or pull it closer to you if you want. Yeah, there you go.
Better?
Much better, thank you.
Awesome. Yeah, this is some extensive work being done by the Mass DOT. It seems to be improving sidewalks, adding designated turn lanes, and, sorry, I know there's one more thing here, but they're also expanding roads. And that, of course, impacts poles and their positioning. And these are a bunch of jointly owned poles. I know there's about six, five, 17 poles being relocated. So I know that's pretty extensive. But yeah, it's just to help the Mass DOT upgrade roads and improve safety and efficiency for drivers and walkers.
Okay. So it's 17 poles just in the Peters Street section or for all three?
So that's, that's all three. So there would be six on Waverly Road, five on Peters Street, and six more on Hillside Road.
Okay. Since we aren't doing three separate public hearings, so let's limit the discussion just to Peters Street section right now?
Sure.
If that's, that's all right. Do you have a presentation or anything that will be displayed that can show what's going on? I know we have some stuff in our packets, but I was sure if anyone in the room.
I don't have anything with me.
No, you just do that? Okay, great, okay.
That certainly isn't it.
No, that's, that's okay.
Which is this for you? We can see it down here on.
Yeah. It might be helpful if this folks here, if it's not too much trouble.
It looks like you're moving the poles away, right? So they can widen the intersection?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. Given that we are in public hearing, does anyone have any public comment on the Peters Street proposal? Okay. Any further questions on Peters Street? There you go. Thank you.
How many did you say? Six?
For Peters Street should be six. Or, sorry, five.
When do you expect it to take place, the work to take place?
So that work is currently being led by the Mass DOT, so it's on their schedule. Once they complete their work, we're able to do ours, essentially.
Oh, so they'll do the intersection work first?
Yeah, they'll complete the intersection.
So it's going to be a little bit?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Well, we'll probably start in tandem and work from there.
Like part of, yeah.
Yeah, they'll give us dates, and we'll follow up with them and have our overhead take a look, yeah.
Do they need these poles relocated as a condition of their permits to move forward?
Yes.
Just trying to make sure I understand the sequencing. Okay.
Yep. They should have all necessary easements and stuff like that already in file.
If there's no other questions, we can move to close public hearing.
I'll move to close the public hearing for Peters Street.
I have motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, I will take another motion on Waverly Road, please.
Motion to go to public hearing on Waverly Road?
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are on to Waverly Road. Okay?
Yep.
Anything further out on Waverly versus Peters Street?
It's just it'll be six poles instead of the five from Waverly.
And these are all located within North Andover, right? Because I know the intersection is a little bit, is right at the line?
Yeah, it should be. Yes, correct.
Same situation, I think, where it will all happen sort of at the same time as the renovations to the intersection.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Any public comment on Waverly Road?
So they, but it's near the area where the, the three communities meet, isn't it?
Yes.
So we have to coordinate that.
Well, it looks like it's all within North Andover.
They're asking us about the North Andover ones.
Yeah.
And then they can go find out about the others.
Yeah, because if I'm looking at that map, that inner way over the road is Walgreens, Petco, right? Yeah.
So 725 and 727 are single-family homes, as is 432 Winthrop, right? So we're pushing into their property? Is that correct? But is it still on the public way?
It should all be on the public way, yeah. Since it's the Mass DOT leading it, they should have those documents.
All right. Any public comment on Waverly Road, public hearing? Okay, seeing no, I'll take a motion on public hearing.
Go ahead.
Motion to close public hearing on Waverly Road?
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, last one, yep. I'll take a motion on Hillside Road.
Motion to go to, motion open hearing for Hillside Road.
A second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are in public hearing for intersection Hillside Road. Same situation.
Same situation.
How many poles?
So it should be six poles as well.
This is not starting for quite some time, right? Like they're, the 114 project is still a long time out, right? Like a year or two.
That's the impression I was under for a couple of years.
That's, okay. You're just, okay.
But.
That's what I expected. I just want people to understand that it's not really imminent and.
Yeah, Mass DOT needs to know that they have what they need.
Right, no, I understand why, but for the sake of the public who are going to be not looking forward to this actual construction happening, they have a while before it's going to be a problem.
Education and design.
Yeah.
Do we have any general time of the year it'll take place or not?
This is a long project.
Yes, many years.
A long time.
Many years.
We're not sure which year, let alone which time of year.
I forget. It's going to start in a year or two.
When are they going to start? When are they actually going to start, though? They haven't even got to the bidding phase yet.
They're not even full design yet, I don't think.
I think they just finished 75% of it. But it was supposed to start, right? Like.
I don't think so.
So they cobble together a lot of years of tip money, and with this project possible, I think that they have had some flux with design over the years, but these projects usually are like a decade long.
Like 10 years in the mid.
Yeah, by the time they happen.
I think they're still on this, I just remember going to the Meramec meetings, and I still, it was like 26 maybe that they were going to start, so we have a ways to go.
Okay. Any public comment on Hillside Road?
Thank you. Eric Loth, I live in Lavender Circle, North Andover, but I'm here in my capacity as an owner and manager of Bowden Capital Group, who owns two of the properties on the corner, up Hillside and Turnpike, and a third on Industry. So I've owned them for probably 10-plus years. We've always contemplated a development. We are developers, and so we haven't, you know, done anything with it yet. We've been sitting on it, waiting for the right thing to come along. So I guess I'd first like to ask, as opposed to comment, ask if the representative can talk through some of the poles and the distances they're moving. My brother and I, who works with me, we went out there earlier and took a look at some of these, and at least one of them looks like it's moving 26 feet back into the property and then has guy wires coming back off of those. So it could be that if, if and when we go to develop, we build up to the edge of the setback on the property all along the corner, especially if it's going to be a signalized intersection. So I want to make sure that those aren't going to impede our ability to develop. And contrary to what's been said, Mass DOT has not worked through all the easements and takings out there yet. We've had a taking on the corner of Hillside and Turnpike, but at 190 Hillside, which is the next one in there, they haven't even approached us yet. So I know that it's a long process. They have a lot of work to do. But like I said, like to understand where these are moving. Do you see them going in an easement and a taking? We just want to make sure that, one, like, we walked 190 Hillside and looked at what 26 feet would be, never mind the guy line. It's right in the middle of the front yard. I mean, we have tenants there that have a few little kids. How are they going to mow their lawn? Kids plan out, like, I think to just kind of accept where these are going is going to be a mistake. The other one that's on the corner of Turnpike and Hillside is, I think, moving back a little bit, but it's still basically right up on the corner, which seems like a bit of a dangerous location. I've got to say, any of the plans that we've developed for, you know, a larger development there, not a single-family home, that would really be our front door. If you're driving down, you know, Route 114, that's the front door, like, you know, of any development. And having a pole sitting right in front of the front door and right where a car could go into it doesn't seem like the best plan. I mean, if I was stopped there, I'd love to hear what these mean, because I only see four poles here, and I think you mentioned six. I don't know what the other two are. And I guess the other thing I'd mention is, we did ask for a bit of a better plan. There's actually buildings on these lots, but it's really hard to tell where the poles are in relation to any of the buildings, to see a setback off of, the street is setback off the buildings. We asked, I don't know, a couple of weeks ago, and haven't seen anything yet since. So we certainly don't want to see anything move forward until we can all understand, you know, the geometry here. So, thank you.
Thank you. All valid reasons to worry. I guess my best advice right now would be, this is a long-term project, so things are, of course, the scope is, of course, going to change over time. That's definitely something that would be probably negotiated with Mass DOT, since we're just, they're telling us, hey, this is where the road is going to go, and this is where we want your poles to be, and we're kind of making sure it fits our regulations and our scope. So I would love to answer it, but you kind of have to go back to Mass DOT and ask them, you know, what are their plans moving forward if they're going to take up so much of this, you know, is that public right-of-way or is that owned land? So I would love to answer, but.
Yeah, I guess I was thinking to your question earlier, you asked if everything's still within the right-of-way.
But then it's not.
But it seems like it's not.
There's no way that, that pole's going 26 feet in, that's on your property. There's no way that there's a, that's a public way.
If I may, Alex Loth, also here for Bowden Capital Group. So there are some construction plans out there, preliminary construction plans that I think the town had on their website, and when I requested plans, they basically sent me the same thing. Still very hard to tell, still no underlying building on 190 Hillside to be able to determine where it is in relation to the building, but as best I could tell from looking at the plans, the poles are not in the taking, they're over the line into the easement area rather than the taking area. So I think, as my brother said, a lot of questions to answer, and maybe if, if it's the Board's pleasure to put this aside until they're able to answer some questions and, and make sure these are where they need to be, that would be our preference.
So the Board could choose to continue the public hearing to our next meeting in order to try to get some answers. That way, we don't need to repost it.
I think that's a great idea. Can we do that for all of them? Because I know that just.
Absolutely.
We're talking about single families at the other locations.
We have to reopen them.
The only thing to say is they were also notified of this meeting and.
Sure, I know. But I would say, and I agree with you, but you're, I think it's hard to, for, I think it's hard for somebody to read that plan and understand the impact on their property.
Definitely.
And understand what 26 feet is, or eight feet, or, you know.
True. And, and I guess seeing them in context with the 114 plans, and again, really understanding where the, whose property these things are on.
Right. Well, that's, that's concerning, that these are going on to typically, they go.
They already closed those hearings.
We close them. We can reopen them, because I think this has raised enough questions that I'm concerned about the previous of the other, the other two projects, so.
I agree.
So, okay. All right, so in light of that, is there any additional public comment this evening? Okay. I'll take a motion to continue the Hillside Road.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
This is continued to our next meeting. I would like to take motions to reopen items A and B, Peters and Waverly, so that they may be continued to our future meeting as well, just because I don't feel they want to close this.
I'll make a motion to reopen items A and B.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'll take a motion to continue those.
Now I'll make a motion to continue all three items until our next meeting.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are continued. We'll put these on the next meeting agenda, and if we have enough addition, we'll take them there.
Maybe.
Thank you.
So the Mass DOT needs to be part of this.
That might be probably the ideal person to get some from Mass DOT here. Yeah.
Good luck.
I think consultants.
Thank you.
Okay, that fast forwards us to item G on our new business, the commuter rail feasibility study presentation. Do we have Zach Meltzer here with us?
Excuse me, could someone in the back pull that shade down a little bit? I'm getting ready to take my sunglasses out. Oh, it won't, don't do it then. It might come on your head.
No, it's like mesh, so it is pulled. It's just, we get 10 minutes of horrible light at this exact time.
Rosemary, I'm happy to scoot you over.
Yeah, just.
Close you up, both friends.
Okay.
Is that any better?
Oh, this one's better.
All right.
Need my sunglasses.
I'll see you in a little bit.
Okay.
I'll have to lean like this.
All right.
My name is Zach Meltzer. I'm the staff planner here at the town of North Andover, joined by David Nelson of Jacobs Engineering, and we're here today to talk about the commuter rail feasibility study.
Zach, can you pull the microphone a little closer to you?
Yeah.
More for the folks.
No problem.
We can hear you fine, but.
Yeah. How's that? Is that better?
Thank you.
Cool. Just for context, we've been working on this project with Jacobs since January of last year. They're one of the biggest engineering firms in the world, and they've done a great job on this project. It was funded through ARPA and a state earmark, and the main reason we undertook this project was because it was a strategy in the 2018 master plan, as you can see in that bullet point. And with that, I'll hand it over to David Nelson, who can get into more of the technical aspects of the study.
Thank you, Zach. I'm David Nelson. I'm a senior consultant at Jacobs Engineering. I've been working in the commuter rail industry since 1982, when I was the charge of planning for the Boston and Main Railroad, when I was about Zach's age.
No wishing.
Today, we're going to talk about the background of the study, station, and there were four topics that this, that the town of North Andover was particularly interested in is, where does the station go? How is it designed? Do we have the appropriate infrastructure? How would the railroad operate? How many people would ride it? And what benefits there would be? And how to approach implementing such a, an improvement if we decided to. With that, let's talk about the background. This would be a new station on the MBTA's commuter rail network. The MBTA is, you know, Massachusetts State Transportation Authority. It is the third heaviest ridership commuter rails network in the United States. New York's is more heavily ridden, Chicago's is more heavily ridden, then Boston, and then right behind it is Philadelphia. 14 stations, 14 lines, 142 stations, serves 80 communities. There are seven stations in the Meramec Valley. Five of them are on the line that goes to Haverhill, and then there's also, obviously, Lowell and Newburyport are in the Meramec Valley, but they're the terminus of their own stations, or the terminus of their own lines. There has been no service to North Andover since 1974. Before that time, there was 113 years of service, roughly, being provided by the Boston and Main Railroad. In the 70s, the Boston and Main had already gone bankrupt, and the service was cut back. Town of North Andover, now 51 years ago, said, well, we don't need this service now. And for a variety of circum, of reasons, it hasn't come back until this recent set of concerns of, oh, well, maybe we should rethink it next. The Haverhill line, which is the line that this service would be on, is, runs from North Station to Haverhill. The line continues further to the north and the east. It goes to Portland, Maine, and then from Portland, Maine, it goes to Bangor, and then from Bangor, it goes into Canada. The line in Massachusetts belongs to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, specifically to the MBTA. It's 30, the portion that is served now is 33 miles long, 14 stations. It's 65 minutes from end to end by a passenger train. Maximum speeds are generally about 60 miles an hour. 7,000 weekday boardings before COVID. Ridership has suffered some since COVID, and there are no public counts available for the new, the new period. The commuter rail schedules on this line, which is an important thing to understand about this particular line, are severely constrained because 55% of the line is single-tracked, and that makes it so scheduling services that go in both directions is tricky when there's only one track. So that there's, it's a constrained scheduling problem in terms of how much service you can economically operate into this stretch of track. If there were a station in North Andover at the location we talked about, the travel time would be approximately 60 minutes to, to North Station. Next slide. One of the first issues in the project, first questions, was, well, if you were going to restore a service to North Andover, where would it go? And, yeah, where would it be located? There's about three miles of the line is traversing North Andover, where it hugs the Meramec River. The southernmost part is largely residential and commercial, and the railroad is, I think, what, two blocks that way, right? Yeah, I grew up in, in Andover, so I'm pretty sure about my local.
You're the neighbor to the south.
Yeah, the neighbor to the south.
South Andover.
Yeah, South Andover, or West Andover. The, there are three land use clusters in the community along it. There's a residential, commercial, which turns out to be where the train station had been. It was on Sutton Street. It's long gone, but it's also really close to the Lawrence Train Station. So you wonder why do you need to build another station within a mile of, of that station? The next longest block, two miles, is industrial. It's the water treatment plant, it's the airport, and some businesses that are largely anchored, or the largest of which is the, the trashed energy facility. That not being a particularly great area for walking in and around or developing housing, that was sort of set aside. great area for walking in and around or developing housing, that was sort of set aside, and then we're come to the Smart Growth District, which is the old Western Electric site, when this was, in the, put in the master plan, the Western Electric site was empty, and since then, there's been significant developments on that, and that may have changed some of the elements to it, and constrained the site some, and we'll talk about that, next, but nonetheless, given the other circumstances conferring with Zach and the rest of the planning department, it was determined that we should look at, can we find a place for a station on the Osgood Landing Site, the, and it turns out that the Osgood, go to the next slide, actually, the Osgood Landing property, the old Western Electric, was 160 acre, 168 acres, 70 years old, since that time, since that closed in 2002, more than half of the property has been developed as a, as a warehouse for Amazon, there's 58 remaining acres that are zoned for smart growth, that allow for multifamily housing, there's 3,000 feet of frontage, next slide, the focus now is on that section where the railroad abuts, the transit oriented development zones, much of this property at the north end of the Osgood Site is subject to wetlands protection, so the southwestern edge of the site is preferred, for those of you who've, you know, all of you have been around here quite a while, the.
Watch yourself.
Quite a while meaning all, you're right, 15 years anyway, but you all remember the ball fields, which are now a, a solar farm, the site that is of, of the available land that's adjacent to the railway, the solar farm is the, is the one parcel of land that's not significantly encumbered by wetlands protections, so we're looking at putting a station that goes between the solar farm and the railroad, you know, so it's a tight site, next, so looking at that, and it gives a substantial amount of analysis is going to this, and the reports will be available, we've developed a station design that would meet the MBTA standards, that would meet the Americans with Disabilities Act, that would, you know, conform to all state and local regulations, that would be near the, but not interfere with the solar farm, provide 200 parking spaces for customers to come in, walk access out to, out to 125, and, you know, platform on each side, there's an overhead bridge so that nobody has to cross the track and grade, et cetera, et cetera, the estimated cost to develop this station would be $55 million, including a 40% contingency, before you get too excited about the $55 million, it is the MBTA's policy that they, if there is a new station, they pay for it, this wouldn't come, I've, in all my years, I've, can't remember a community that made us, what would really be considered a substantial contribution financially to developing a new MBTA commuter rail station.
But we all pay for it, just one way or another, right?
Yeah, but the thing is, is if, if all of you are paying for it, it's finally your turn to get one. Next slide, let's talk some about the infrastructure, as I'd mentioned, the line is only 45% double-track, it, as somebody who has written timetables for this line for a long time, this is a tricky one to work through because there's just so many constraints in scheduling with the, with the triple, with the double, single-track parts, the way that happened is, when the Boston and Main was bankrupt, they tore up a lot of the track to reduce maintenance, and at that time, there was no passenger service on the line, it was during a period when it had been shut down, and the Commonwealth only owned as far as Redding at that point, so they said, all right, go ahead, everyone involved in the railroad industry has regretted that decision for the last 50 years, the incomplete, however, working with the Down Easter that runs on this line, the Amtrak train that goes to Portland, from Boston to Portland, nine miles of double-track has been partially restored, the project hasn't been completed, it, it works for Amtrak, but it doesn't work for the commuter railroad, and scheduling this line and its ability to provide high-quality service to North Andover would be much improved if that incomplete double-track project were completed, and it would help everybody in the Merrimack Valley on, on these lines, because all of their services would be improved, and the MBTA frankly, at a, at the human level, very much wants to see this go forward, what they haven't heard is much support for it from the communities that would be the affected positives, now granted, you don't have a station, you don't have a dog in this fight, but Andover, Lawrence and Haverhill very much do, and they, so far, they haven't recognized or have other priorities, have not come forward and say, well, this is something we'd really like you to finish.
We can have a station, but we have commuters.
You have plenty of commuters.
Improve service, yeah.
Yeah, and it would improve service, the completion of the double-track project is critical, it's severely constrained, if you want to inspect this diagram, it shows that, you know, Lawrence, Haverhill and Bradford have some of the lowest ridership and the lowest numbers of trains on the network with, in the zone of 26 to 33 miles from Boston, which is the part that we're talking about, Lawrence and Lowell are both 26 miles from Boston, Lowell's in the upper right-hand corner, they have 3,000 boardings a day with their 37 trains versus Lawrence has 25 trains, 20, 26 trains, and they only have 1,000 boardings, I would submit that Lowell and Lawrence are in many ways sister communities, I call them the tale of two cities, but that's the sorts of improvements that you might be able to get if they were able to complete the double-track project and be able to offer the same level of service to Lawrence and Haverhill that they now offer to Lowell.
I'm sorry, just, just make sure I'm clear, the, this graph shows the number of train, across the bottom is the number of trains.
Number of trains, that's the number of trains per day, or per weekday.
So as the number of trains increases, ridership increases?
Yep, yeah, if this job was hard, I couldn't do it.
It's fine demand, yeah.
And so where do you think the people, where do you think the commuters are going from this area, are they driving, or are they getting to like Anderson, Auburn?
They're, the data from many years ago, from the 1990s, which was the last time they did that comprehensive of a survey of where are people coming and going to, Anderson hadn't been developed yet, people in Lawrence were driving to Andover and to, and to, not in Lawrence, in, in, at North Andover, were driving either to Andover Station or to Lawrence Station, and at that time, Lawrence was considered to be sort of unsafe, so there were actually more driving to Andover, they built a new safe garage in Lawrence, and Andover's overflowing. Yeah.
A small saddle.
So, things have changed though.
Right.
But that's where they're traveling to, to make their trips, and then a number of them are, you know, choosing not to, not to take the train and are driving, as you may have noticed, travel on I-93 has never been more congested than it is now, except on Monday evenings, it seems, because no one goes to work on Mondays.
They're all coming here, perhaps.
Yes, maybe they are coming here for work, so next slide, background, the railroad is used by three different railroads, the tracks that are behind me, the MBTA is the owner uses most, provides most of the service on the line, Amtrak runs by here, 10 daily trains, they do about 1,500 daily boardings, and then there's a freight service that is run now by CSX, who inherited the B and M line by spending money to buy it, and they run four to six daily trains, it's not a real heavy lift on their part, it's mostly forest products and coming down from Maine, next slide, all right, so how many people would ride it, there's a few provisos in this ridership forecast, the MBTA hasn't provided or collected good data since 2018 to allow us to really do good projections on what's going in the post, what's going on in the post-COVID world, but they are building a new model, it's just wasn't ready in the timeframe to do this, and if you're interested in moving forward with the project, they've agreed to work with the Town of North Andover or, or the MVRTA or whoever, MV or PC, to update the forecasts when their new model is ready, which now seems it might be 2026, but the forecasts using a standard tool indicate that would be approximately 500 travelers passing through the station, just from people diverted from other stations, or a few new North Andover residents who are, who are attracted to the new service up at the, up at the site, if housing is developed on the site, that so-called transit-oriented development, there's a literature and some forecasts that have been done on that impact, and it indicates that if all the housing that were available or to be built, were built there, you'd pick up another 330 additional boardings, which all toll is a, is a good number of passengers for a community this size, you know, compared to others, the data on all the other stations is in the report, so there was some specific requests about project benefits, the travel time savings, that's funny, it's, yeah, I, never mind, the travel time savings turn out to be, you know, substantial compared to driving and arriving in downtown Boston at 8:00 in the morning, so 14,000 minutes and 10,000 miles per weekday, the MBTA's Community Zoning Act, the Smart Growth Zoning, would add as many as 300 additional trips made by new households that are in, in North Andover that weren't there before, fiscal benefits, they'll have to, not confess, but to acknowledge that the literature on what are the fiscal impacts of commuter rail stations is pretty thin, they haven't been able, you know, the academics and the, and the government have not been terribly interested in it, and so, you know, there's a 30-year-old paper that was constructed and, you know, built for the, looking at the MBTA network by a Harvard academic, and he estimated that having a commuter rail station in your town would add almost 7% to the value of the homes over time, so, you know, Wellesley has three commuter rail stations, and their homes do it pretty well, there's also a lot of, you know, which is their first, the train stations, the chicken or the egg, but it would be an asset to the community that would help with its livability and that, and that provide new mobility options for travelers that would translate into some money, and then finally climate change, the amount of mileage taken off the road would reduce greenhouse gas emissions from Andover residents by about 900 annual tons, that turns out to be about seven pounds per person per, per year, next slide, okay, so, if you all remain interested, there's a two-stage path to implementation, I would recommend that first, North Andover have some liaison with its sister commuter rail communities, and get them and MVRTA and Merrimack Valley Planning Commission to communicate with Mast D O T and the MBTA that they'd like to see the double-track project completed, I mean, what's, I can, is this on TV? Yes, okay, I knew that, but I was going to say, is, largely in Boston, they're waiting for the people of the Merrimack Valley to say that it's important for them to finish the double-track project, and they haven't heard that, and other communities are clamoring for improvements, and they're getting the improvements because they haven't heard from these communities, from the Merrimack Valley communities, so a word to the wise is, if you'd like this, and the other communities would like it, and I would certainly encourage you to like it or to want it, is let them know, they, it's largely been silence, there's no, been no advocacy, not even any sort of commitments, or just, you know, expressions of interest, and so if you want this to move forward, and you want to improve service for the, on the existing network for the travelers you've got, who, you know, may be boarding in a different town, but live in North Andover, tell the state that you'd like to see this project, this half-completed project completed, I would suggest that once that is in motion, and you've seen updated forecasts on, with improved service, and with the improved ridership model, see how many benefits you really do get out of this project, and determine whether that's something you want, I would think that it would be, there's a few unfortunate elements as to the, the sighting of the station, it's, it's now tricky because the very best spot to put it in is now being, you know, used to park truck to trailer trucks, but we, we can't revisit that, so, that's my, you know, my advice on implementation, and there's, it, given the way the financing of it works, don't expect that you're going to be asked to make a substantial individual earmarked contribution to it, if it is something that the MBTA and Mast dot decides to do, they'll pay for it, you know, they're not going to come to you and ask for 10%, or if they do, it'll be the first time, so with that, any questions?
Yes, thank you for the thorough presentation, any questions for Mr. Nelson or for Zach?
I was inviting somebody in because the room looked full, is that one, did you make comment on the idling station, or the idling area, or is that still in Bradford?
That's in Bradford.
It still is.
It's still in Bradford, there's an intention, there was, there was a very strong intention of moving it to New Hampshire, which was probably a little disingenuous, and now there's a location that they're looking at, which is farther from homes, that's closer to the, to the town, closer to the state line, but it hasn't moved in a while.
That's not that close, though.
Yeah, it's not that, yeah, it's, the other thing that's going on, and maybe, maybe Zach will live to see this, is there's an intention to electrify the commuter rail network, it will be a, the latest number I've heard, which may be too high or too low, is $20 billion to electrify the network, and when the electric, the network is electrified, the idling will go away.
And so will the fossil fuel.
Yes, and so will the fossil fuel, so that's, that was moving. Yeah, this was moving along until, and now things are a little unsettled nationally with, with this, you know, the funding for these sorts of projects is obviously, like everything, the federal funding is a little bit more tenuous than it was, the good news is, the Federal Railroad Administrator used to be the president of Pan American Railroads, he's, you know, he lives in Hillsborough, and, you know, knows this area well, you know, however, it's not clear that, how much real authority that individual has. However, it's not clear that, how much real authority that individual has.
In your experiences, let's say, let's say something gets greenlit in our town tomorrow, we say yes.
Yes.
The MBTA isn't known for swiftness.
Oh, no.
So are we talking a decade? Fifteen years?
I was, when I was working on this proposal, I, it was a specific request was, well, you know, what's the implementation plan? And the, yeah, the, in the real world, it generally takes, allow a decade from the time you say you want it. What?
The double-tracking, I think showed up on their capital improvement plan like 20 years ago.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's been a long time. They, yeah, 15 years ago, this started working for Amtrak, and they've been waiting to do this, but you know, the, the squeaky wheel gets the grease. Time to start squeak, if you want this, start squeaking.
And all this, this would be lovely. What I'm hearing from you is the double-track would really improve service to our area.
Yes.
And whether you need to go to Andover or Lawrence or Haverhill to catch a train, like just the frequency of having more trains.
The frequency, yeah. The plans are, that have been, you know, kicked around, are to bring it up to 40 trains a day. And frankly, you know, I've been in contact with some of their planners, they could do better, you know. Just because of the way the, the, the dynamics of the train scheduling would work out, they could probably do the 40 trains and then more. The funny part about it now is Redding already has 40 trains a day and they don't want anymore. So that might actually be the upper limit on how much service you can get, is they don't need to see, they're now saying we've got enough trains.
Enough trains.
As someone who has to make the decision whether he's taking the 4:30, the 5:30, or the 6:30, I would appreciate an increase in service.
Oh, yeah. I can't imagine how you actually make the ride.
Today was the 4:30 to be back for this. But $55 million for 40 new riders, right?
Is, that's why we need.
Doesn't seem like it's gonna get off someone's desk at that MBTA headquarters.
It's limousine service.
Yeah, it's, it, what it does is it moves, it shortens the trip for other people who are currently using the service, presumably from North Andover. It shortens their, their travel.
I feel like people would be much more inclined to use it, though, right?
That's pre-COVID data.
That's really, yeah, and the driving now is absolutely horrific.
Yeah, be the converting.
I don't know.
Yeah, there's a lot to be seen. COVID changed the commuter railroad nationally in a way that I had no idea was ever, you know, I, you know, was ever gonna happen. You know, in 2019, this was a go-go-go-go-go-go-go industry. Now it's an industry that's, you know, certain amount of, you know, circumspection over what do we do? How do we maintain these assets? And the MBTA is moving hard forward with improving service to be able to serve more different types of trips. But they're constrained by the fact that, you know, money doesn't grow on trees even with the millionaire's tax. But they'll get there if you ask. I mean, they just approved, so on this morning's paper, almost $10 billion for capital improvements next year. $55 million or 100 million is not a large fraction of 10 billion.
Forty percent, forty percent contingency, too, it's good.
And that contingency is obliged. I mean, there's a, you know, generally, by the time forces are through working and the general 10-year incubation time, between the time you ask for something and when it arrives, the prices rise. Anything?
You certainly live up to all the knowledge and education that you have in this industry because it comes across loud and clear.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
I'm happy for the opportunity to speak with you, and I like my job.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you both.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to do this. I wish you luck. And if you want any more advice, just call. Zach has my number. Thank you so much. I want to see this go forward.
Thank you.
Personally.
As long as the idling station isn't in town, I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay. We have, next up on our agenda, we have a presentation from the group Save North Andover Who's presenting to us tonight? Just your names and we'll go from there.
I'm Carol Disney. I'm the chair of Save North Andover Wildlife.
And I'm Dr. Nene Cucatrol, a participant on the committee.
Thank you. Welcome.
Okay. So we are, we are fortunate to live in a town with an abundance of natural beauty and a strong conservation ethic, as seen by our early adoption of the Community Preservation Act. We enjoy the many properties that are in permanent conservation, such as Wire Hill, Osgood Hill, and Half Mile Hill and others. You could show the next slide. Here's a small sample of conserved land that I imagine that many of you know well. So Mazarenko Farm. Do the next one, please. And Carter Fields. And the next one. And I think a lot of you know that view from the top of Half Mile Hill, which is arguably the best spot in town. And then the last slide in this series. And if you look carefully on the slide on the right, you'll see a barred owl. It's a fledgling. I got a little squeezed by putting it on that page, but.
Do you have, do you have a laser pointer so you could point it?
I can see it. I can see it.
Oh, good.
Okay. And I took, I took that picture with my phone last week. So I Googled, what are the best things about North Andover? And if you do it, it will say natural beauty. And also they talked about expansive walking trails. So, and a couple of sources all said the same thing. So I think it's fair to say that natural resources are a big part of the identity of, of North Andover. So we are a group, there's several of us here tonight, that are dedicated to reducing the class of a poison being used in town that is sickening and killing wildlife and pets, in which also poses a danger to children. If you could do the next slide, please. So you see two bait boxes. The one on the left is the one you're most familiar with, but the one on the right is like the sneaky one. It just looks like landscaping, but that's also a bait box. So the name of the class of poison in question is second-generation anticoagulant rodenticides, usually referred to by the acronym ESKARS. And if you break it down, you know, rodenticide is a rat poison, and anticoagulant means the blood stops coagulating. So these poisons are in ubiquitous bait boxes found all over town outside of businesses and school properties. Next slide, please. That's barred owl. An unintended effect of ESKARS is secondary poisoning to our wildlife, which in North Andover includes coyotes, foxes, hawks, and bod eagles. When a ratter mouse eats poison from the bait box, it doesn't kill the animal right away, but it leaves the bait box, it goes, it can live up to 10 days, and it gets weaker and weaker as it bleeds out, and it's a very easy target for predators. And it will, if it eats enough poisoned rats, it will sicken and die. A 2021 Tufts University study of red-tailed hawks found that 100% tested positive for rodenticide poisoning. So right now, red-tailed hawks are currently raising their young in North Andover, and a nesting pair of red-tailed hawks brings 10 to 15 prey items to their fledglings daily. This morning, I went back to look for the owl, and this time actually saw two adults, and one of them was feeding two babies or owlets, a mouse. And I was all excited, and then I just got this horrible feeling, like maybe they were feeding it a poisoned mouse. So, next slide, please. So in their lifetimes, a healthy fox can consume 2,000 to 8,000 rats and mice. A red-tailed hawk, which is in the middle, 10,000 to 20,000, and a great-horned owl, 20,000 to 50,000. So not only is this a wildlife tragedy, but we're killing nature's best solution to rat control. Next slide. These are barred owls. We just, I just showed you a baby barred owl. These are barred owls that were unsuccessfully treated for rodenticide poisoning at Cape And Wildlife. So we want to be clear that we are not a pro-rat group. We recognize that people do not want rats and mice in their homes and businesses, and their rats can be disruptive. But poisoning them with ESKARS is not the solution. Next slide, please. We advocate a process called IPM, which probably a lot of you have heard of, or integrated pest management. Simply put, this means that we reduce the rodent population in three ways: exclude, starve, and target. Exclude means to do things like filling up entry points to our homes, as a rodent, like a mouse, can enter an opening as small as a pencil. We starve them by securing trashcans and dumpsters and moving bird feeders away from our homes. And yes, we target as necessary with lethal and non-lethal means, such as snap traps, electric traps, CO2, you can put it down tunnels and it will kill them, birth control, and as a last resort, D3. In the materials we provided you beforehand, you can find more detailed examples of IPM. There are a number of pest control companies in the region that provide rodent control without resorting to ESKARS, including on municipal property. We are here tonight to ask you to consider regulating ESKARS on North Andover municipal property. We have learned that outside of the school district, the town is not currently using ESKARS, but we would like this practice to become an official policy. This has been done in a number of other towns, other local communities, including Lowell, Newbury, Ipswich, Arlington, Belmont, and Lexington, and most recently, Bill Rica. In the letter that I sent you, there's 34 towns that have done it in the last year, cities and towns, including Boston. And by the way, in Lowell, which is a city, right, they stopped using ESKARS in November 2024, and I've talked to the person who does the service for the town, and he's had great results. And I believe I enclosed a letter from him. We're prepared, so anyway, we know that this information is probably new to most of you, so you need time to reconsider our request. We are prepared to give you at another time more information about integrated pest management and cost comparisons between using ESKARS and using other methods of pest control. We can also provide detailed information from wildlife rehabilitators, including toxicology reports and pest control professionals about successful pest management. We also have two members of our group here who want to make brief remarks about their own experiences about health risks associated with rodenticides. So Denise? So remember the little bait, the bait box that looks like rock?
So my experience is, my name is Denise Dion. I live at 25 Elm Cross Road. My experience with a bait box was about two years ago, I was walking behind the East Mill, like behind Stachy's, with my, at the time, five-year-old grandson and three-year-old granddaughter. And my grandson picked up the rock, and he's handed it, and he's holding it, and he's moving it around, and he calls his sister over, and he shows it to her. And then he was so intrigued by this fake rock that he could lift, he wanted to take it home. I had no idea what it was at the time, and I told him, no, you can't, it's, obviously it's plastic, it's not part of nature, so obviously someone put it there so you can't take it. If it were today, I would, I would say, don't touch them, they have poison in them. But that was me two years ago who wasn't aware of it. So it, it is a little intimidating having them around like that. Thank you.
And we have another person as well.
Good evening. Janet Foley, 174 Bradford Street. My story is about a neighbor on my street who about 10 years ago had a little sheltie dog, and the dog died. And when we were walking, he told us the story of how the dog had found some rat poison that they had put in their basement to eradicate the mice in their house, and unfortunately the dog got into it and died from it, and it just devastated them. And that was the first time I was aware of even these pellets that they were putting into boxes, so. I'm encouraging people that, like Carol talked about raptors and wildlife, we're all talking about our pets, too, our cats and our dogs that can get access to this, too, and die from it. So I'm encouraging all of you to consider codifying the practice that you're doing now without using the ESKARS, but also I think we need to educate our citizens and then, you know, in the town as well, because we're all using it in our houses, those of us who have mice problems, so.
Thank you. We've started, we've been trying to, at least this group formed in January, and we've done a couple of public education events. The most recent was at the Sheep Shearing Festival, which was, talked to a lot of people. We had a big kickoff meeting that was pretty widely advertised, March 31st. We're hoping to have another event in September, and we're just going around talking to boards here in town, neighbors, friends, and spreading the word, and most people are, just have never heard of it before and are pretty shocked and horrified. So questions from the board?
Yeah, I'll go up to the questions. If anyone has anything.
I don't have a question, but I certainly commend you when you're good work in, in helping to keep our pets alive and our animals alive. And it's a lot of work, but I hope you get a lot of satisfaction because for those of us on the other side of owning pets and loving animals, it means a lot.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So we would like you, you know, to take some time and talk about it, and we're very happy to come back and give you more information, if you let us know what you need.
Yeah, there's probably more studies, like more fourth, third-party studies. I got the letter from the pest management company, who is not unbiased in their presentation, so maybe some more, you know, independent studies I think would be oriented. Have our town departments weighed in, did board a health plan?
They haven't sent us anything formally.
Okay.
I didn't ask them for a letter. I just presented it as a educational opportunity, but I told them that we were coming here to ask, you know, to regulate. And the Conservation Committee also wants more information, but they were very interested. And I'm meeting with the Sustainability Committee next week, but we've talked to them informally, and they're like very interested. And the North Andover Improvement Society has written a letter of support. So I think we can get more letters. The studies are tricky, although we will find some. The person, the letter was somebody that used to use ESKARS, and he didn't believe that they had that effect until he met with the wildlife rehabilitator who showed him toxicology slides. And he switched, he had to because he could, he had the feeling that Lowell was gonna go ESKAR-free, which they did a few months later, and he's had great success. And I have a list of other places that don't use it as well. And some places, if you ask them to, they won't. But like, I know you're, know they're using it at the high school, but I walked around the high school and took pictures of the bait boxes, and I found like a really big hole in the wall, like, like the size of a brick. And I was just, and I told them, and they've replaced it, but the pest company didn't even find the hole, and they should, that should have been done. And then I was just walking around the other day, and the dumpsters were like wide open and broken. And when I talked about excluding, you have to make sure they don't get in, and you have to make sure there's not food when they get in, like at home. Like, we get mice in our really old house, but I, we have traps and we're sealing up holes, and I keep my cereal in these hard, heavy-duty plastics, and so they can't eat that. But if I leave it out, they, they come in. So it's, a lot of it is like changing habits, and instead of going to the most dangerous poison first, there's other things that you can do. And there are other poisons that can be used. And Lowell, he uses sometimes vitamin D3, which is toxic, but it doesn't cause secondary damage, it doesn't cause secondary poisoning to other animals. So it's not that you have to use that, there's, there's other ways to control it.
I think that's sort of important at some point as we look at this.
I think that's sort of important at some point as we look at this, because you can't, I mean, it's unrealistic to think that in the schools, the dumpsters won't be open and, you know, there's just too many people and too many, you know, so finding a way.
This was on a Sunday morning, and it was wide, it should be closed, you know, and it's like...
But there's just so many people in and out all the time and a lot of...
We have to learn new habits.
Well, and exclusion of a building of that size is also a real challenge. And I'm not dismissing the efforts. When we're talking about a home, and we all trying to keep, you know, rodents out of our basements, but it's really, really hard when they can get into something the size of a dime in a building as large as the high school, right?
A lot of stone foundations around here.
I guess what I'd like to, I'd like to understand, if you guys could do a little further research, it would actually be helpful if we can, because I think secondary poisoning is a real thing, right? I love the owls on my property. But I also know that, or I don't know, I guess I'd like to better understand, are the owls that are in most of our conservation areas, are they finding their ways towards municipal buildings, which is what you're asking us about right now, and hunting, you know, rodents who come from those municipal buildings? Or are they hunting more in the wild? That's, I just want to try to understand if that's possible.
And I can't definitively answer that, but if you think of some of the places around the watershed, the lake, Edgewood has a whole bunch of them. It's right there. The high school is right there. The Stevens Estate, they're on that, they're right there. And they're definitely, I mean, they have to be eating those mice.
They're alive for ten days, they're going to get somewhere.
We've talked to Rolling Ridge, and they're not using it. And the Historical Society said they wouldn't use it. But those are the areas I'm most concerned about, but still. But it's not being used at the police station, town hall, the fire station, other things are being used, so.
Those, my follow-up question is, if we're not using municipal property right now, was that a conscious decision? Why? Was that an economic decision? I'd just be curious to know why we made that decision, if it was a decision, or just happened to be the group that we chose. It could be accidental.
On the town buildings, we trap.
Yeah.
So we use sticky pads and other deterrents, but we do not use poison in any of our buildings. It's only the schools right now that are using poison.
We had a problem this year.
It was a major problem. It was a major problem.
But Manchester here and a lot of schools.
Yeah, that's actually true.
Yeah. But on the municipal buildings, what we do is trap. I would assume that would be a much more dangerous thing to do in a school. I think, I can trust them not to put their fingers in the traps, but, you know, I think, that makes it, well, maybe, depends on the day, but it might be a little bit hotter in the school. So we'd have to think through, you know, other ways to mitigate that. Again, though, the schools don't fall in our jurisdiction, so I think if this was something that we were trying to roll out town-wide, it would have to be by law at town meeting in order to mandate.
That makes sense. That's what we originally thought.
Well, actually, the other towns are not going to town meeting for, that's only for private land. On municipal land, it can be, that's what all the other thirty-four towns did.
They could go to the school committee, right?
Right. We can make policies for our own buildings, but we don't, we're not in charge of the school buildings. So they have to make the decision for their own buildings.
So, but you could make it for all the municipal property except for the schools?
We could.
I mean...
I think we should talk to the Stevens Estate, like, if they're using, that is our property, right?
Yep.
So we just talk to them, just to...
We do have pest control there as well.
I'd just be interested to hear what they have...
They use the same vendor. My advice would be to hear from the Health Department, right? I think that would be important. So if we could ask them for a formal opinion, have them take a vote on what their sentiment is, that would probably be very helpful.
And it's, I think the packet includes the, there's legislation right now in the state, right?
There is legislation in the state. It's the Hawkins Bill. And I might have sent you a sample rodenticide policy. All of the policies in every one of those thirty-four towns says, if there's a severe outbreak, you could use escars for, like, fourteen to twenty-one days. But in the high school, I talked to the pest control guy, and he said they're going to use them for twelve to eighteen months. And that's, other pest control people go, "What?" You know, I mean, anyway, there is that in there, because it makes people feel better and feel safer to think you could use that. But again, there, you can use D3 too, which also kills them, but it doesn't kill barred owls, and, yep. So how should we leave it? You'd like some more information? Would you like me to bring in some speakers?
I don't know if that's necessary right now. I mean, I would think we've, I think we'll probably get back to you, Melissa, if any additional questions that we may have, and...
And we'll go to the Board of Health next.
Yeah. I think that's probably sufficient.
Or you could maybe speak at the Board of Health.
I think they have already.
Well, I've met with them, and it was, they were, it was warmly received. I didn't ask them to do anything, but I just wanted, we're just spreading the information, educating.
I just want to applaud you for that, too, though. I think even just making sure, I mean, keep doing the work that you're doing, especially to bring it to residences. People don't think about stuff like this, and they call the pest control people because they have a problem. I would not probably ask them what they're doing. I just want them to fix the problem, right?
Well, I didn't know it.
The education piece of it is really important, and I give you a lot of credit for doing that. I hope you'll continue, you know, yeah, as we sort of work through, you know, as we sort of work through this.
I think that is really important, because I really wasn't aware, sorry, I wasn't really aware. I live at 101 Mill Pond, and of course, there's lots of nature and wildlife and water all around there. And then I started counting the bait boxes, and I happened to catch the pest end person that came by, and I said, "Oh, you know, what are you using?" And he showed me the bag, and they were escars. I'm like, because people have dogs there, and there's rodents.
People just don't know.
They don't know, right? So I agree, the education's really important.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have item I, which is vote to hang pride banners on town common. I will take a motion.
Oh, so I'll move that we vote to approve hanging pride banners around the town common.
Is there a specified, is there a specified time period for this?
We had some dates in here, because we were going to ask you to do it after Flag Day, so we wouldn't have to put it up and then take it back down, I think, was our request, right?
Because that's to come down for Flag Day?
That's what our, I thought the banners also did in the policy.
I think it was just a flag.
Please hold, let me pull it up.
Yeah.
If you want to go to the next one while I look, that's fine.
Okay.
If he can give you a quick update.
Okay, we can, we'll table that for the time being. We'll go to vote to approve collective bargaining agreement between the Town of North Andover and NEPBA, local 102 communications officers. Do I have a motion?
I'll move that the Board approve the collective bargaining agreement between the Town of North Andover and NEPBA, local 102 communications officers for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2028.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion or commentary? Okay.
No, I just want to thank everyone for their hard work.
Definitely.
Excellent. Always good to get one wrapped up.
It's not very easy.
Right, that's right. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That is approved.
Okay, so you're correct. It's not in there. It's our, it was our own request, I apologize. We have the flags up for Memorial Day, which we usually leave up till Flag Day. So that's what we're going to say, could you put them up on the 15th? No. The ones around the common, the flags around the common. Now, to be fair, three of them have fallen in the last two days, anyway. So that does kind of add to it, but that's why we asked it that way. What day is the Pride and Popsicles event?
That's Wednesday, but so...
They wouldn't be up by then?
No, they're not going to be up by Wednesday, anyway, that's fine. But they, I mean...
Could we just coordinate with DPW on based on their time to go up and down?
I mean, I don't...
And be up for no less than two weeks?
It doesn't matter. And then going for, like, there's not really a reason you can't have flags and banners on those poles.
Yeah, I don't think...
I don't think they're, I mean, just looking at them, like, I think...
Each pole can hold two flags.
And the banner.
And the banners?
That's what, yeah.
Okay, that's fine, then, yeah, we can just say, when soon as DPW is available.
So, yeah, and that's fine. I mean, that, two weeks is fine.
But the American flag must be on top.
Yes.
They're not, yeah, they go separate ways. They're not...
They're not on the same standard.
Yeah, they're not. It's different than, like, when you hang a flag, because they're separate.
Yeah, they're not going on a flag pole.
Yeah, they're not going on a flag pole.
I will make sure that all flag protocol is followed.
Okay. Yes, please.
Appreciate that.
I will make sure that all flag protocols follow before they go out. Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, that's...
So I will check in with them, and then I will check in with DPW, and we will have the poll.
The scouts will know.
Mm-hmm. So the motion should be to hang the banners around the common in conformance with flag protocol and based on DPW availability for a period of no less than two weeks in the month of June.
Okay.
Got it?
That is the motion.
So now it's motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion on the banners?
Can you repeat that motion?
Oh, boy, I don't think so. Nicole's going to have to get it.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, next up, we're on the licensing. I appreciate the patience of everyone in the room as we've gotten through a number of items here. I will take a motion to move into licensing.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're in licensing.
You all came for licensing tonight, I think. All right, we'll move as quickly as we can. I will, our first item is a public hearing for the change of ownership at 2022, sorry, 220 Sutton Street. So I'll take a motion to open the public hearing.
So made.
Second. A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We're in our public hearing.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
My name's Attorney Jonathan Rossi from Morris Rossi &amp; Hayes Office in Andover, Massachusetts. I'm here on behalf of S&amp;P Management LLC. I've actually been in front of a few of you quite some times before with a few different liquor licenses, both transfers and purchases. This one's a little bit different. S&amp;P Management LLC is going through a little bit of a structure change. One of the members of the LLC is being bought out by two new members. One of them is here, Richard Burton is here. So there's a little bit of restructuring there, but the LLC is going to stay intact and to also continue to own the liquor license. So that requires a change of, it's technically a change of ownership, because it's new LLC members. Then it's also a change of management, because one of the, one of the managers is no longer involved in the LLC, so there are two new managers. Again, managers of the LLC, not the liquor license itself, that's staying the same. The manager of the LLC is still staying on board. The third change would be changing the DBA from Buon Obistro to Viva Chino. And then the fourth change, which again, very different, okay, very different, and I understand there is a pledge involved. Since the new members came in, there was a buyout, of course, and then they are putting a lot of money into the place and making it a much better establishment experience for everybody involved. So there's, so those are the four changes that we're here on behalf. Again, the LLC is staying the same. S&amp;P Management will still remain as the owner of the LLC, excuse me, the owner of the liquor license. Okay, one?
Different members of S&amp;P.
Correct. It went from three members, one who had 50%, one had 49, and one who had 1%, okay? I know you're all, I just want to make sure you're all following. I know, it's a different, this is different, and I know it is, and trust me, I've spoken with your clerk and everyone else, and obviously, Tom and all, you guys are so easy to work with, and I love working with all of you, especially in the clerk's office, okay? So the member that had 50% ownership, he's been bought out. The member that had 49% ownership has dropped down to 32.3, 32 and a third, okay? So that difference was bought by two new members, so they each have a third, 33.3. So it went from 50, 49, and 1, to 33 and a third, 33 and a third, 32 and a third, and 1.
Oh, the 1% stayed, huh?
The 1% stayed.
Oh, okay.
She is the manager of the liquor license. She is very important. She would never leave. And I believe she's the wife of the remaining member, so there's no way, no way she was going to leave unless he wasn't going to leave too. So, so that's what it, so again, it is four changes on the one, so it's very different. I had a long talk with the clerk and everyone else in that, down in that office, trying to get the right way to frame it. So that's what we're trying to do here. So it is really four changes on one application, which is definitely different. So, but as you can see from the application, the ABCC has all that. I could do eight or nine changes if I wanted to at once. I didn't, I don't want to do that, but we can. So, but that's, that's what we're here for. And I, and I've, my client, Richard Burton, is here, he's one of the new members. I've spoke with him at length, he's, he knows the business, they're going to revive this place, and they are going to make it, I think they've already started, making it much better and for the town and the community.
Is that common, that the liquor license holder only has a small percentage?
In my experience, yes. It can be that way, for sure. And I think, if you want me to expound on that, I can. Usually, it's because there are three, or two, or three, or four members that want to do all this, do the work, put the money up to it, and then there's one person that says, "Look, I'll do a lot of the day-to-day work." And that's owning the liquor license, being the manager of the liquor license is a risk, right? I think we can all agree that. You're the one, you're the one that's in charge, your name's on that. S&amp;P Management LLC is the name on the liquor license, but the manager of the liquor license is very important. And this person is, she, she's day-to-day, she's in, she's in it. I have young kids, so in the thick of it, if anybody's served the backyard again, that's into the thick of it, that's, she's in the weeds, if you will. So, so yes, I have actually, and I've, I've probably done 25, 30 different liquor licenses in the last 20 years, five or six here in North Andover, and it is, it is...
Fairly common.
Yeah, it's common, absolutely common. Yep.
Is the manager-managed LLC?
Yes.
Three managers?
Three managers, yep, the ones that have the most interest, yes. And it was previously managed, yeah, so nothing, that has, again, that's, that's one of the changes.
It didn't go from member-managed to manager-managed.
Correct. It's still say manager, manager to manager, yeah. But that's a change, because it's a new, two new, two new members, but also two managers of the LLC itself, so that qualifies for another change. That's why this floor.
All right. Any other questions from the board? Any public comment? Okay, then I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We're going to move on to item B, which is a vote for your application. I'll take a motion.
I'll move that the Select Board acting as licensing commissioners approve the application from S&amp;P Management LLC DBA Viciano, Vicestino?
Vicino?
For a, for a change of officers, directors, LLC managers, change of ownership, pledge of collateral, and change of DBA at 220 Sutton Street.
Before we vote, Madam Chair, I'd like to give my speech.
Can I second that first?
Oh, of course.
Second.
Any further...
You might change your mind after. We in North Andover, we, it's a college town. We are very in tune to what are young people of college age and hopefully not younger, people of college age, and hopefully not younger, but that, so we put the onus on your clients right at the beginning. This is fair warning that out-of-state licenses do not cover you for presenting proof of age or whatever. Only Massachusetts ones do. So if they do use, say, like, New Hampshire, Connecticut, or whatever, Rhode Island, and the person is not of legal age, then they could be in trouble. And we do, we really try to enforce this really pretty well. So if you could just remind them, just do your job, do it diligently, and maybe get one of the machines.
Not only have I done that, I will do that, but I've heard that from you before.
Because, because we know what happens with, thank you, but we know what we're dealing with, with college kids and.
Absolutely.
So that's fair warning. And other than that, if you have any concerns or whatever, the lady downstairs, who's the clerk, is great. They're all great.
The best in the valley.
Yeah, no, she's very good, as you noted, and thank you for that. So, there we go. Proceed.
All right, I have a motion and a second. So, open seven days a week, Italian fare, yes? Anything else you want to add while you have your moment of glory?
He is Richard Burton, by the way.
Please come, he says, please come.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Oh, that's great, thank you. I meant to put that in there, and I forgot, so thank you.
Great. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Very much, everybody.
Thank you.
All right, we'll be moving on to item C. We have Brig from Marble Ridge here with us today for a pouring license.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for us with the select board and town manager. Good to see you all. My name is Brig Leland. I'm the owner and winemaker at Marble Ridge Winery here in North Andover. I'm joined this evening by my colleague and our head of operations, Ally Procopio. We're honored to present our application for a farmer winery pouring permit. Marble Ridge Winery is located at my family's historic property, Marble Ridge Farm, which has been continuously owned and operated by my family since 1680. I grew up in North Andover, am now the 11th generation owner, following in the footsteps of my father, Brig Senior, who is here tonight. I started the winery in 2020 during the pandemic with a mission to produce sustainable, world-class wines, preserve the rich history of Marble Ridge Farm, and create unique and meaningful experiences for our community. The response has been overwhelmingly positive, and we're here tonight to request the opportunity to extend our award-winning service and offerings. And with that all said, I'd like to turn it over to Ally. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Ally Procopio. As Brig said, I'm the director of operations at Marble Ridge Winery. I'd like to provide a brief overview of our operations as part of our request to expand our pouring permit. Marble Ridge Winery operates under Massachusetts' Farm Winery License, which currently allows us to serve a sample flight of wine. We are requesting approval to serve full glasses of wine on-site, which we feel is the natural next step in our growth and the expected guest experience when visiting a winery. We have a team of 23 tip-certified employees who are thoroughly trained in safe and responsible service of alcohol. Our staff has extensive experience in serving both onsite and at offsite events, and is committed to maintaining a professional, safe environment for all guests. I'd like to also highlight that we are experienced in pouring full glasses of wine, both here in North Andover, as well as some of our neighboring towns such as Andover, Newburyport, and Methuen. We have operated without incident, and we take pride in our ability to safely serve alcohol. To complement our wine offerings, we now serve a curated menu of charcuterie meats and cheeses, crackers, pretzels, chips, popcorn, and chocolates, and a variety of non-alcoholic beverages and mocktails. We are in the process of expanding our prep space to allow for additional food offerings in the future. We are highly mindful of our location within a residential area, and we strive to be respectful neighbors. To our knowledge, we have not received any complaints. Additionally, Brig lives on the property, and we are all committed to maintaining a peaceful, well-managed environment for our guests, our neighbors, and the owner. Our current public hours are from Friday, on Friday from 4:00 to 9:00, Saturdays from 1:00 to 9:00, and Sundays from 1:00 to 6:00. We appreciate your consideration, and we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Do you have any of the answers of what I put out before, just before you sat down?
I'm sorry?
Do you have anything you'd like to say about what I was saying to the previous person?
Sure, yeah. We, our clientele is typically not a college-age student.
No, I wouldn't think so, but you never know.
You are absolutely correct, and that's where, of course, we rely on our tip certification, our training. But fortunately, or unfortunately, we do not see any college students at our property.
Yet.
Correct. We're prepared for it.
Now, do you have the machine that does zip through the driver's license and age?
I wrote that down, Mrs. Medili, and I'll be looking into that. We do not have that now, but we are thoroughly trained, you know, we, we.
You know what you need to do.
We do, I mean, this is all that we have served for the past three years, so, or five years, actually, yeah.
Sounds good.
If approved tonight, how fast will you be up and running?
As soon as the ABCC allows us.
We are ready.
Needs to go to ABCC, right?
Correct.
So not tonight?
Unfortunately, no.
Unless you cut it in your bag.
I can attest, as a neighbor who can almost walk there, it's, you know, given the events that you guys have had so far, it fits in beautifully in the neighborhood. It really does.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We've done a great job.
We take that really seriously.
We've done a great job.
We're very happy to have you. I will take a motion.
Move approval.
You're still in the public hearing.
Oh, sorry. No, oh, yeah, we gotta pull, sorry. Is there any public comment while we're in the public hearing? Nope. Then I will take a motion to, oh, sorry.
My name is Nancy Leland, and I live at 270 Great Pond Road, which is right across from this winery. So I did take the opportunity to look at the application that was submitted that had some limited information about what it is that they're doing there. And there are some things that I'm very concerned about, what's going to be happening. I mean, I'm the one that lives right across the street. I see when delivery trucks are coming and going. I see the traffic sometimes when they're having events like they did this weekend, and that stalled traffic in the street. There are also, I don't know about their parking, whether they have adequate parking for the number of people that they're hosting. Did notice that they're parking the cars out in the field. So as far as what's happening with the watershed protection district and stormwater discharge, I don't know that that's been addressed at all by this applicant. So I'm not aware that it has, but I would think that that's probably a concern for public health. So some of the things that they're proposing to do in terms of having food vendors and caterers to provide other types of foods, I don't know, are they gonna have food trucks pulling into this place? And what does that look like, you know, for us, okay, for the neighborhood? Noise management, they are wanting to be careful about what noise and, you know, disrupting the neighborhood. So we're not supposed to have any outdoor activities concluding at 9:00 PM. So what I'm wondering is, you know, with all of these things that they want to do, what's happening with the indoor activities? And when is that gonna end? So are we gonna have, you know, parties going on until midnight, you know, stuff like that? I mean, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know, you know, what it is that they're gonna be doing in the future, and how long that's gonna last for, and when that's gonna take place. But certainly, I would think that as a residential neighborhood, we should have the opportunity to be able to either, you know, notify someone, or a complaint, or whatever, some kind of opportunity to be able to say, this isn't working for us as a neighborhood, that there's problems with it. So that's what I'm advocating for in terms of all of the residents in the area. They have expressed to me their concerns about this permit. And so I think we all need to be able to have the opportunity to continue to have conversations with the town about it as they move forward. The, yeah, and one of the things I mentioned was the parking. I mean, I, it's kind of hard to tell what's going on over there with the parking, whether they have adequate parking for the number of guests that they're gonna host, or whether they're always gonna be having them park as overflow parking out in the field, which may not be the best thing as far as the protection for the lake is concerned for our water supply. So they obviously have intentions to, you know, they mentioned they want to do a possible caterer's license, so now we're starting to look at, you know, a more expanded operation, and doing their own catering and things like that, and having places to prepare the foods. So what does that look like for traffic, and for people, and what's going on in the neighborhood? And they have seating, they're saying seating for 50 guests with 20 other guests possibly there. So there's 70 people that could possibly be in that building doing an event. So where are they all parking, you know, and how long is this event going on for? And are they, they mentioned something about having live music. Well, I don't particularly want to be listening to live music, you know, that's I can hear across the street. If they've got some party going on, and there's an event going on, and there's like no restrictions on when that indoor time stops, you know, so you could be having things like this happening. And I don't know whether it will or not. I hope it doesn't. But if it does, what kind of recourse do I have in terms of saying, this isn't right? So if there's restrictions that you can put into their permit that would accommodate?
That would be their entertainment.
They don't have an entertainment license right now, so they cannot have live music. Their permit does restrict them in hours to end at 9:00 PM, so they cannot serve after 9:00. The building department has signed off on it, not conditionally at all, so there was no zoning violations found, which means that they did not find that they were not compliant with parking. That being said, if you find that you're in a situation where the license, you feel the license is not being followed, for instance, you hear live music, or it's 10:00 PM and you think they're still serving, or whatever it is, you should call the police, because they would come in, they are the licensing forcers, and so they would come in.
And so what about if the other neighbors in the area feel that there's something that they don't like about what's happening with the operation and as it's functioning?
So every year, we would have these same hearing. Usually, it happens in January, but since this is a new license, we're off. And so every year, people are able to come to the public hearing and talk about what they like or don't like about an application. And that would be a time when we would be able to address any issues that did happen. But in the moment, if you have a license violation, you should always, you can call the business line, you don't have to call 911, but you should always call the police.
So what about, what about the parking, though, in the field? I am concerned about that.
We can bring that up to the building department. However, they did sign off on this, saying that there was no violation. So I will certainly bring it up, but they did not find any violations.
This is about a pouring license, only this is not.
This is not their entertainment.
About entertainment.
There's no entertainment license right now, no. No application for one.
So, so what, I guess I'm just wondering, like, so what happens if you have a gasoline spill? It's not, you know, they're not covered under the pouring permit, but you have a spill of gasoline out in the field, and this is in the watershed production district. They're also within a buffer zone of the pond, the wetland, that's on their property. So where does that, where does something like that end up?
Mr. Chair, I can have both conservation and the building department go out and look at the parking, but I don't think it is as relevant to the liquor license.
It's not under our jurisdiction.
Yeah, but I'm happy to have both of those things explored.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any further public comment? With that, I'll take the motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Second, a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And we'll move on to the vote for the application for the pouring license.
I'll move that the select board acting as licensing commissioners approve the application from Brig Leland to Marble Ridge Farm LLC DBA Marble Ridge Winery for an on-premises farmery, farmer winery pouring permit at 11 Marble Ridge Road.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. But don't go far. Oh, wait, can I just do, I thought you were next, but can we just do that?
Yeah.
I'm gonna skip. We're gonna go to the farmer's market one.
Don't get it reached.
All right, so we have an application from you for a seasonal alcohol permit at 120 Main Street for the farmer's market. You want to speak about that?
Sure, yes. So I'm not gonna reintroduce myself, but we, we hold a farm winery license. As I discussed, we received MDR approval to participate in this year's farmer's market as an agricultural event. I'm here tonight to request permission for us to be able to sell bottles of wine and also provide small samples at the North Andover Farmer's Market once a month, starting on June 22. Again, all of our staff members are tip-certified. Anyone serving or selling bottles of wine that night will be tip-certified. We've done this at other farmer's markets, the Andover Farmer's Market, and the Newburyport Farmer's Market this year. Each guest that wants to have a sample will obviously be carted if we suspect that they are under 21. The sample will be consumed in front of us. Nobody leaves the area with that small sample of wine. We don't anticipate any issues. If there were something to arise, obviously, we would work cooperatively with the North Andover's farmer's market or local authorities should any major concern arise. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'd like to add one more thing. It's a, it's a pleasure to be part of the North Andover Farmer's Market. Historically, we have not been able to, and so with the new location and some changes, we were invited to do this. So we're excited to be, you know, more part of this community. So, thank you.
I'm gonna recuse myself from the vote because I sit on the farmer's market committee.
All right, then I'll take a motion.
I'm unapproved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further questions or comments?
Have we ever had a, have we ever had that happen at the farmer's market or similar?
I don't think so, because we have another one, another application, so I think this is the first year.
Under the watchful eye of Town Hall this year.
Right.
It's gonna be the draw to the farmer's market. All right, so I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna go back to item E, which is Burton's Grill. They have a change of officers, directors, managers.
Hi.
Good evening. My name is Margot Gillis, and I'm an attorney with McDermott, Quilty, Miller &amp; Hanley in Boston. And I'm here on behalf of the licensee, Burton's Grill of North Andover LLC, doing business as Burton's Grill, and I'm representing them in their application for a change of LLC manager. So this change is largely administrative and will not affect day-to-day operations. There are five current LLC managers, and the proposal is to remove three of the five, so the two remaining ones will stay on the license. So Denise Herrera, Kevin Heron, and John Doyle are being removed as LLC managers, and Anthony Akil and Mitchell Kahn will remain on the license. They've previously been approved by this board and the ABCC, so they're just remaining on the license. And then there's no other changes and no, like, difference to the daily operations. Happy to answer any questions.
Seems pretty straightforward. Application was in order. I'll take a motion.
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Item F is an application from Mitchell Schneer of Acaton Coach.
Akatan.
Akatan.
Nice to see you. They all play ball.
Good evening.
Hi.
First time ever doing this. It's interesting. I didn't know how to make a presentation, but it's easy enough.
Whatever I do will probably be just fine.
Just tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
Yeah, so I spent 40 years in the recruiting and HR business, and found myself unemployed about a year and a half ago, which is unfortunate, because I'm very well-connected within the world of VCs and PE firms, but it happened. So I wanted to open up some kind of new business. And I've been a business owner previously in Connecticut and sold businesses and stuff. So I entered into this, you know, driving Uber, and then I opened up Akatan Coach, which is, you know, a ride, kind of share, you know, company and limousine-type service. Akatan Coach comes from the, my daughter, because we adopted my daughter from Guatemala about 25 years ago, and she comes from Agua Catán, Guatemala. And my wife helped me, who's walking back in the room right now, helped me with the name, an A name, so we use that as the name, just to honor, you know, my daughter and have her somewhat involvement within the business. I could say that I've been doing this for about, you know, three or four months now, and it's been really successful. I've had a lot of people from North Andover, as well as the surrounding towns. What I did also offer, because I love the older community, and I think I do very well with the older community and connect very well with them, I have a lot of the car service for the assisted living and independent living, and I charge a very discounted price for them. So not only am I just helping them go to the grocery store and doctor's appointments, I also help them in their home, you know, just to, you know, tidy up and keep everything in line. It's been really very, very rewarding. So that's my story.
Great.
And I'm at 366 Forest Street. I've been here for 25 years.
And it's just you driving?
Just me driving.
She's essentially operating it out of your, out of your home?
Out of my home.
One vehicle?
One vehicle.
So, all right, not gonna have a bunch of.
I mean, God willing.
Lot of airport trips.
Lot of airport trips. Matter of fact, I have one person waiting there at 10 o'clock right now. So if you say yes, I'll be out of here.
But no fleet of vehicles at your house?
No fleet. One vehicle, I own it. I don't have a, you know, second. My wife has a car, which I put in the application, and my daughter, so there's three of us.
No one, no.
Yeah, that's it.
Take a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll move approval.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second. Any further comments? All those in favor?
No liquor license.
Just don't speed on the way to the airport.
Thank you. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. Good luck.
Good luck.
Next, we have a common vic license for 162 Sutton Street Supreme House of Pizza. You're up.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Very good. So my name is Magid Michael. So I'm Egyptian, by the way, so originally Egyptian. But I live here in United States almost like 16 years now. So this is the second time I attend for, for the meeting. I have another branch, but it's called, it's a different, a different name for the restaurants in Westford. And I used to live in Paris for eight years. So I have experience about the Italian food. So when I moved to, to United States, so I continue working in the restaurants. So I have a lot of experience about these ones. So finally, I find this location and we try to make the best for the resident here. So I, I'm gonna, like, happy to, to invite you to try our food. Okay, so, so and I'm pleased to answer any question. Sure.
We kind of love them?
Yes.
And pizza subs usual?
I have Greek pizza. So I know this is like Italian pizza, but Italian pizza now, it's delicious, but it's need like more work and more professional people to, to do it. And it's, it's very hard. But I'm trying to get the Greek, the Greek pizza as an Italian taste. So I'm, I'm happy to, to, I already did this once and the pizza, I changed it already, like 100 percent. And it's tasted more different now. So and the other, the other items also, so try.
We'll try.
You're welcome anytime.
All right, I'll take a motion.
Move to approve?
A second. I have a motion and a second. Any further, you know, welcome?
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Last one, we have an application from Nate Chase of Salt Box Cider Shop for a farmer's market, seasonal alcohol permit.
I'll recuse myself from this.
Hello.
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 Yeah, I'm Nate Chase. I'm from Salt Box Cider. We're based in Haverhill, Massachusetts. We make dry ciders. We sell them in cans, kegs, and some sparkling cider in bottles. We sell them throughout northeast Massachusetts to shops and restaurants. We've been around a little over a year. We'll be at Haverhill Farmer's Market this year and hoping to be at North Andover as well.
Do you have a storefronts or?
No.
No, okay. All online or where we can find you? Yeah.
All to the shops and restaurants we distribute to.
So direct retail, okay.
We don't sell anything direct, except for, we'll be at the farmer's markets.
Got it.
You said you've been open a year?
We've been selling cider for a little over a year. Last April, we started.
Any other questions?
Where in Haverhill are you looking?
We're on North Broadway.
All right. Excellent. Some nice variety in the farmer's market.
Yeah.
I think you heard, you know, the prior applicant too about no samples, just straight selling, right?
Samples, yes.
No samples, okay.
That is included, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, yep. And I'm tip certified.
Tip certified, okay. Be consumed in your presence and all that stuff, right?
Correct.
How many people, like, would be at your, at your booth?
Just myself and perhaps my wife and-
Is she tip certified?
She's not, but she won't be serving. She'll just be company.
All right, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval. Second.
I have a motion.
We're in unison.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Take a motion to close licensing.
Move to close the licensing question?
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much for a lengthy licensing hearing. All right, we are on to consent items. We've got five consent items, which I will take a motion on the first four. I'd probably like a little bit more discussion on item E, if that's okay?
Move to approve consent items A through D.
A second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
With our letters of thanks. Item E, can we just get a little bit more clarity on, on this? Because we're, are we creating a new position here as a part of this?
So we actually, we funded this position as part of APPA.
Okay.
Previously. So we are not creating a new position. We're hiring a consultant. So it's a three-year grant at $60,000 a year to pay for an energy manager consultant.
Okay.
It's not a bad idea.
We had originally, we had originally funded it through APPA and then put it out several times and found that the funds we had available were nowhere near enough.
Okay.
And then lovingly gave that money back. So now we wanted to, we wanted to go for a different route, which is why Laurie applied for this grant.
Got it, okay.
And I believe we were one of only, was it three communities that received it? It was very competitive.
But it was very competitive.
Very competitive grant. She did a great job applying for and getting it, yes.
So, and as I see, so we, we hire an employee for, is it a contract employee for three years? And then they reimburse, I think is what?
Nope, actually, we, yeah. I mean, we're, we're basically hiring them. They're a contract person. So we have a vendor contract with them. It's somebody that's actually already familiar with the buildings. They did our initial evaluation when we first were doing all of the evaluations, like 10 years ago. And they provide the funding and he bills us like a normal vendor.
Yeah, they aren't on our payroll.
No.
They're not going to be an employee.
So there's no benefits, none of that stuff? This is straight?
It works just like a vendor.
Okay. When I was reading the, through the, the grant agreement, it looked like it was, okay, you do this, meet certain deliverables, then we reimburse you, right? I want to make sure that we're not necessarily on the hook for something if ever source decides, yeah, you didn't meet this deliverable at this particular moment. Okay. Okay. That was the only question I had, sorry. Not looking to be difficult, but accepting $180,000, I want to make sure I understand.
It's good to know.
Yeah, so, okay. In that instance, then I will accept a, a motion on item E.
I'll move approval of item E.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Good job, Lauren. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have the approval remits from May 7th and May 13th. Everyone had a chance to review. That was, I think, a special meeting and then town, one right before town meeting. So not, not heavy reading.
Very brief. I'll move approval of the minutes from May 7th and May 13th.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, select board, please.
Well, I don't want to forget this one. Happy Father's Day.
I'm, keep hearing was successful. It was a good event. The weather really cooperated and it was fun to see some new, new vendors and new programming. So congratulations to them. SOS overnight party was awesome. And they had a huge number of graduates attend and-
295, I heard, something like that?
Yeah, it was like, it was over 80% of the class that came. So that was pretty awesome. So on that note, congratulations to all of the graduates. And the weather was great for that too, so.
A busy weekend, that's right.
Thank you to the patriotic observance committee for a lovely Memorial Day parade and service.
Dave Hubrin did a fantastic job.
The stories are amazing.
Yeah, he put, and he cut that way down and it came out fantastic.
It was great.
You did a great job too, thanking him for on our behalf.
Fantastic.
Yeah, it was, it could not have been nicer. It was a beautiful day.
It was a beautiful day, yeah.
It was really full and it, it made you proud to be an American and to honor those who have served.
On those lines, we also have coming up, I think it's this Sunday, a flag retirement ceremony with the Cub Scouts and Boy Scouts at Ridgewood. They did that last year, I think, for the first time. It was, it was great, very well attended, great ceremony. And the Field of Honor- Was it, was that? Oh, they did? Oh, they did before COVID? Oh, great. And then we also have the Field of Honor will be ending on Flag Day on June 14th. So they'll have a ceremony, I think, at 10:00 a.m. on Flag Day.
Looks so nice. It's been very windy, which has been great for the, to look at those flags.
And then Pride and Popsicles, Wednesday, 5:30, is that right?
Wednesday, 5:30 at the Common. And one more plug for the farmer's market, which will start on June 15th from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in our new location behind Town Hall. We will be handing out a lot of coupons and all kinds of fun things. So we hope everybody will come visit.
And samples of cider.
And wine.
And wine, is that what you mean?
So I think, I don't know.
I give up a big lecture right now. Very busy right now, so. Very busy right now. I'm sure we left stuff out.
All right, Tom Mander, please.
Yeah, a lot of things in there, just a couple of quick ones, though, that I'm going to highlight. The bike rodeo under the circumstances is canceled for Saturday, June 7th. We're going to wait and do that. I think we said in the fall. Our 2024 water quality report is out. So those of you that are looking for that, it's on our website. We have confirmed that the Independence Day fireworks are going to be July 6th. So you'll all be asking soon. So you may as well know now, July 6th. Additionally, I wanted to mention that Pat McGreev's civics class received a commendation this week from Desi for their work in civics in their SLC Pro. And they do a great job. And so we're always happy to have them as part of our programming. And finally, if people are, are looking for information, firefighter deshines services are going to be on Friday at Polar Funeral Home in Methuen. You know, it's the awake and funeral on the same day.
It's on the same day.
All the same day, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much, love.
Very sad.
Very sad.
And I think it all misses to, to his family and the entire fire department. It's a big loss.
Huge.
It's a big, big loss.
Okay. Our next meeting date will be here in two weeks, Monday, June 16th. And with that, I will take a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.